Fantastic. Good morning, everybody. Thank you for coming out a little bit of your time and scheduled this early in the morning to come here. What we have to say and learn a little bit more about us, Bermanton School Board Directors. And school board director is a really important position in the community, so I appreciate your time. I'm Allison Roeder and I'm running for school director for Bermanton. And just a little bit of background and information about me, I am a mother of two. I have a third grader at Criminal Elementary and a three-year-old preschool daughter. It's actually starting today. It's her first day, so she's anxious for that. I'm married to a Bermanton firefighter, so we're very invested in our community. I grew up in Port Angeles, a town even smaller than Bermanton, so love being in another small town, making progress in my community. I went to school at Washington State University, have a bachelor's degree in psychology and a master's degree in public affairs. I've worked for over 15 years professionally, full-time in the field of education, different capacities, mostly outreach for education programs and helping to serve low-income students go to college. So when I first moved to Bermanton, everybody always told me, "Don't send your kids to Bermanton schools." And that really struck me as sort of, "Oh, no, parent of a community and people don't think they're highly regarded in schools." Being one that comes from education, I did a lot of research about that and I don't hang everything onto test scores. And thankfully walked around the different schools, learned a lot about the different programs that Bermanton offers, and was really impressed particularly with the elementary options and availability that our children have. And the parents took their kid in a school program that really fits with their Bermanton style. Second to that, I also was really impressed that I was working in a position at the time where I was able to work with superintendent of Bermanton School District, other district administrators, teachers and counselors, not only Bermanton School District, but 14 other school districts in the Olympic Peninsula. And I was really impressed by the willingness and the passion and the heart of the administration to welcome me as an outside of the union program to Bermanton schools. And also their passion and desire to help their students. So those two things really made me decide that Bermanton was the place that I wanted my kids to go to school. So I've made my home in Bermanton and my children are going to school in Bermanton. As a community member, I'm passionate about my community. I also believe that education is the fundamental building block to any vitality of a community. So for that reason, I want to be a part of running for Bermanton through the communities on that course.
Good morning. My name is Wendy Stevens. I really appreciate you coming out here. I think that running for school board is something that, for me, has been the next step of what I've wanted to do. I've been in a multi-level volunteer position and working experience within my community in Bermanton. And I really want to get involved because I think this is a wonderful school district. I was raised over in Kitsap County, or King County, I'm sorry, over in Bellevue. And I went to what is classified as one of the top 25 high schools, and I couldn't disagree more. I don't feel that having a score of this great high school really gave me the education that I thought I was prepared for. I think that there's so many more opportunities out there. And one of the reasons I've been so enamored with Bermanton is that it provides so many choices, which no other school district provides as many as ours, doesn't believe. When I met my husband, he's in the Navy. He's been in the Navy for 18 years and we've been very lucky that he's been stationed here his whole career. So in two years, he retires and we decided this is where we not only were happy, but wanted to stay. He has two children from a previous marriage. They tried out school districts in the Central Kitsap School District and the South Kitsap School District. About that point, we decided, in watching and being involved, that those weren't the school districts we wanted to be in. And I got involved with Bermanton because I thought they really truly were the best schools. I enrolled my daughter in a Montessori preschool, which was a preschool partner with the Bermanton School District. In that program, I was able to volunteer and help the teacher working part-time in that school and learn a lot about not only the Montessori program, the preschool program, but also be involved with the school itself. I have a degree in early childhood education and started to use that towards getting involved in the school district. I helped the Montessori teachers put together the proposal that they submitted to the school district to start the Montessori public program we now have at Westholz. That program expanded very quickly after its first year and is now a thriving program which has a waitlist in March. So it's very popular. It works very well in our school district. Along with our STEM program, which I also have had a wonderful opportunity partnering with the principal of that school to help educate parents from their transition to Naval Avenue, where they end at third grade, and they then transition up to Westholz. It's been fantastic to be part of a program where we have so many different opportunities for our children to learn. I think that being able to continue to provide those opportunities and give that focus to our families really makes a difference in what we're able to do with our community.
All right. So we'll start off with the questions. We'll go right back to Wendy again. First question is, describe your concept of a seamless educational program as it relates to K-12 schools.
Well, unfortunately, I think that we can have seamless because we don't have a school system where they stay in one building necessarily from kindergarten through 12th grade. I think one of the important parts of it is the partnership between our principals and our teachers, making sure that our teachers have the opportunity to meet together with the oncoming grades. For instance, when they leave fifth grade, they should have an opportunity to make sure that they're meeting with the sixth-grade teachers, learning with the programs that are going there. Principals have the opportunity to come to schools, introduce themselves to parents so that when they go up to that next school, they've already seen a friendly face that they are familiar with and comfortable with.
Okay.
You know, I would also agree because we're not all in the same building. You're never going to have a completely seamless experience. However, there are ways to cooperate and collaborate between different buildings. I very much believe that you can't look at the K-12 experience as separately, where you go from elementary to the next building to the next building without realizing that there should be interconnectedness and building blocks between the two. A really great example of how Bermanton maybe could do something really well relating to seamless transitions is the Early Childhood Consortium, so working with preschools in that area to make sure that they're ready for kindergarten. We have some great partnerships and great collaborative relationships. And I think I'd love to see that continue into the secondary level, providing different options for students and making sure that principals and building administrators and teachers are really all communicating and all that.
Okay. So back to you, Allison. What would your role as a newly elected board member, what would be your role as a newly elected board member?
My role? Well, at first, I think the learning curve that would, any of us would experience would be my first role, is to sort of figure out learning curves if you will, who can handle school directors. And thankfully, the state association puts on a really nice program actually for new directors. So that would be my first role. Second, would be getting to know the other board members and sort of what's going on, seeing their history there. And then also working with the administrators to figure out what are the upcoming issues and how I can help be a part of that.
Okay.
You know, I think that your role really is making sure that you're facilitating excellent schools, that you're providing good decision processes to create a school district that our community wants. I think the first and fourth thing to do would be to meet with all administrators, have a tour of the buildings from the administrator's point of view, as well as a parent's point of view. At this point, a parent is the limited scope that we've really been able to view, most of other schools have. I'd like to be able to take a look in depth at their programs, find out what transitions they have going on, what some of their challenges are, but also what some of their strengths are. Because I think right now, our community really needs to understand how great our schools are. And the perception out there currently is that we don't have good schools, and that's so false. And I really would like to be able to champion and show people how great our school system is.
All right. So back to you, Wendy. How can a school director affect change in the operations of the district?
I think we need to ask more questions. I think we need to really understand what it is that we're evaluating when we're taking a look at a budget. It's not just taking a look at the numbers. It may be asking more questions, going on site to visually take a look at things and get more involved in the process. There are a lot of opportunities out there to understand more and ask some better questions and be in touch with our community. I think that really there is a lot of questions out there that aren't answered because of all the numbers. And it was very overwhelming with the jargon, and we need to put it in more lay terms.
You know, I believe that it's important to recognize that school board director is one of five, obviously, making very important policy decisions and governance for the school, for the school board. And so having the one person that can bring a new perception, a new perspective, new knowledge and new skills to add to that conversation that those five people have. One of five can be really impactful for change, particularly for bringing that new perspective. I definitely am one that follows federal and state legislation and fascinated how that plays out at the local level. So I think that that's a unique perspective that I would bring to the table, particularly with my college access knowledge as well.
Okay. So both of you, this is back to you again, Allison. Both of you addressed this a little bit in your opening, but the question was asked, what is your post-high school education level, and please expand?
Okay. And this is back to me.
Yeah, back to you.
My post-high school education experience is a bachelor's degree in psychology and then I have a master's degree in public affairs. One of the reasons that I chose to do public affairs as a master's is that, even though I was in the education field and everyone said, "Go education, get your master's degree in education," I really was, again, fascinated by the whole interplay of state and federal legislation and how things play out at local level. And so my interest in that made me decide to do things a little bit broader and do public affairs because I thought that would be a good contribution to the field of education and the work that I was doing. I was a first-generation college student myself, so that actually contributes to a lot of the passion and sort of the fire in my belly for the work that I do advocating for equality in education, particularly for post-secondary options.
Okay.
I have a degree in early childhood education. I was not someone who really felt like I got a connection when I was in high school, so I didn't have the passion for college. I think that I've really had a lot more experience in the working level, being hands-on and volunteer experience, being PTA president for three years, on the Bermanton Council for two years, being involved with our city, the City of Good Schools in Bermanton with our financial levy works. I've been involved as a substitute in our schools. I've worked with AmeriCorps for two years in our school district, creating a preschool program to connect with preschool families. Also with, currently finishing a project as a preschool family liaison and connecting with making a preschool program that's free for our community members to understand how to make sure their children are prepared for kindergarten.
Okay. So back to you, Wendy. How can the board support teachers and principals in the Berman School District with the new teacher-principal evaluation system?
I think we really need to know more about our principals. We have some great principals out there and you see one or two at a school board meeting, but you don't really see them past that. I think it'd be fantastic to see principals at more school board meetings, hear from a principal's perspective what's going on in the schools. I also think it's important to have the school board members in the schools. As a PTA president, I had the opportunity to have several of our school board members invited to different events, and many of them have said they didn't get to go to them. No one had ever thought to invite them before. I think it's important to remember that they are a vital part of our school district and have them come to events and see what's really going on in the schools, meet teachers one-on-one so that they can truly understand how the process affects each person.
Okay.
You know, the new teacher and principal evaluation system, I think is actually kind of an exciting thing compared to the way that things used to be done, with a much more black-and-white sort of system, you're good or you're bad. And so the new evaluation system, I think, is actually going to provide a greater opportunity to really provide some substantial and constructive feedback to teachers and principals on a scale of needs work, up to sort of looks good, up to you're, you know, impactful. And so I think that that feedback system for teachers and principals is really going to be important. And as a school board member, I think understanding the system and how it's going to be implemented and also expressing that we support our teachers and principals by way of participating in building events and letting them know that we're supporting them through that process and fully understand what they're in for is important.
Okay. So back to you, Allison. Aside from a healthy, balanced budget, what do you see as the top priorities in the Berman School District over the next three years?
There are a lot of them. I would say, obviously, the fiscal impact and continuing to pressure our legislators on the McCleary decision and fully funding basic education so that we actually have more flexibility to use our local dollars as we see fit, instead of just sort of using it to stay afloat. Academic achievement is extremely important, and I would say for me, that's probably the top issue. Even though our test scores and graduation rates have been steadily sort of inching up, we still have achievement gaps in certain areas, particularly in the low-income students that we really need to address. And our college-going rate is at 40%, which is absolutely not acceptable for our high school students to not be accessing post-secondary options, particularly with one in their backyard. So I think we need to work to change that.
Okay.
I think some of the things besides the financial aspect, again, like Allison said, the McCleary decision really has a huge impact and I think we really need to put the pressure on Olympia to make sure that that is not slipping through. It's not something that they're ignoring, and I think that they still are. And we really need to make sure that our community is putting that pressure and involving them in that process. I think we need to make sure that we're being responsible with our levy funding. We need to be more proactive in addressing our community and letting them know where our levy funding is going towards so that there's a constant update, instead of waiting until when the next levy comes to get that communication out there. I think we need to make sure that we are involving our schools with our community. I think it's really important that we make sure that our schools remember that they're not just providing an environment for the kids in their schools, but the kids that will be going to their schools and partnering with the community of people who live around the schools as well.
Okay. So back to you. What is it about you that is different from your opponent?
Well, while I have a lot of respect for Allison, we've had a good time getting to know each other. That's a hard question to ask without wanting to sound hurtful. But as great as a person as I think she is, I have a lot more working experience with the school district. I spent a lot of time volunteering with the school district, with being actively involved with what's going on in the school district. I worked on the finance committee for two years and really had a hands-on knowledge and understanding of what it takes with the budget. I've worked with the special programs and many other departments to understand what's going on in the school system, being involved and working in the schools, as well as just working with our community directly, representing our community at a city council level, making sure that we're in great things like that, and facilitating the opportunity for our schools to really shine.
Okay.
I also think that it's been fun to get to know each other, actually, prior to this. You know, my experience, I also have been a very involved parent in the district and have been a volunteer in my sense school, whether it be a reading volunteer going in, one day a baby or a parent involved in PTA, you think that I've been involved as a parent in the district. My experience actually, I think, is a little broader in the sense of looking at sort of the state and federal issues related to education, following how Bermanton is implementing those. And I have a lot to say and a lot to offer, particularly from that big-picture perspective. I've been involved in the community on the Kitsap County Youth Commission. I was an appointed member by the county commissioners and have really appreciated seeing what youth in Kitsap County, education and other issues are doing and have been able to move on dropout prevention and retrieval data projects from the youth commission. So I have a lot of experience working in the district as well.
Okay. So back to you, Allison. Kind of a long question. During one of the recent board meetings, the current board voted to remove from the HOPE goals the implementation of standard-based grading and reporting on the secondary level to be reviewed in the future. Do you agree with this move? Why or why not? So during one of the recent board meetings, the current board voted to remove from the HOPE goals the implementation of standards-based grading and reporting on the secondary level to be reviewed in the future. Do you agree with this move? Why or why not?
You know, I actually was a little disheartened by that decision. And that was solely based on the principle behind standards-based grading, given that my passion is really about equality. I think that the idea behind standards-based grading contributes to the equality in education that students should know what an expectation is regardless of what teacher they have or where they're going to school, and I think standards-based grading can help with that. However, I do recognize that there have been many challenges in the implementation of that. I very much would advocate that we look at those challenges as individual problems that need solutions and not get rid of the entire idea based on some challenge that we have in implementing that, particularly in high school.
Okay.
I think it's an over-generalized question, honestly. It's hard to answer that because it was more than just getting rid of standard-based grading. It was really the program in which we were utilizing for our teachers. We had some teachers using Skyward, which is the current system, and other teachers using this new program. I had a foreign exchange student last year and she was a senior at the high school, so we were able to have a hands-on view of both systems, and it was incredibly confusing as a parent. I was involved with the PTA at the high school, who was a collection of parents who were also very confused with the process. I spent some time talking to some of the teachers who had tried it for several years, and the problem really was going from five grades down to four was difficult to do. The standards-based grading in an elementary situation states that a four is not an A. A four is exceeding, and trying to make that transition was just a very difficult way to do it, and it wasn't a seamless explanation.
Okay. So, back to you, Wendy. How do you feel your educational experience has or will benefit this position?
You know, like I said, I didn't think that I had necessarily that perfect high school experience. I think there's a lot of opportunities where we miss those middle kids, the kids who just kind of slide through. And I know I was one of those kids, and not that my parents ever want me to say that, but it's true. And I think we need to reach out more. There's a lot of opportunities out there. And in watching the award ceremony for our graduating seniors last year, there were several very hard, dedicated seniors who won multiple scholarships. One student, I swear, was up there every other time they made the announcement. And while she certainly deserves those, it makes me wonder how come she was able to understand and reach out and connect with all of those programs and so many other people weren't? There was probably a collection of about 50 students that were out there being recognized and receiving scholarships, certificates of any achievement, and yet there were so many more students that graduated. It would be really nice to be able to make a connection with all the students of our high school.
A couple of different things about this. First, that comes to mind, my own education experience was one of being, like I mentioned, a first-generation college student. And so I also was one of those students that came from a single-family home, very low-income, first generation. Wasn't definitely the cream of the crop, nor one of the low performers, so kind of middle floated through and thankfully took advantage of some programs that got me to where I needed to be. I thought that education as a way to have options for my future, took those options. And as I'm fascinated by people and relationships, particularly how that forms collaborative relationships, my degree in psychology, I think, contributes to that. And my master's in public affairs really helps me to have an understanding of policy and legislation and government and all of those things that are, I think, necessary skills and attributes for a school director to have.
Okay. So what boards and/or volunteer committees have you served on? Back to you.
So I have been a volunteer, as I mentioned, in my son's school on a sort of typical parent level as far as ETA and other involvement, volunteer activities within the school. But you know, before I had my son, I had been a volunteer as a lunch buddy in other communities that I lived in, a mentor, foster youth, you name it. I've done lots and lots of volunteering within the education field. And the committee involvement, as I mentioned, I own the Kitsap County Youth Commission, which really gives me a unique perspective as far as county-wide perspective on what youth in Kitsap County are doing. I've also been in state-level committees as well related to education. I was asked to be a part of the Rules Committee at the state level that creates the Washington Administrative Code for the College Bound Scholarship. So I think I have a good perspective of state-level committee work and county level, as well as local district involvement.
I have done several things. Besides just the past five years, I worked for a nonprofit organization up in Polspoh and started getting involved with their government structure up there. I have been a PTA president for the past three years. Before that, I was a PTA secretary and helped with PTA general functions. I volunteered within the school, not just in my daughter's classroom, but in other classrooms throughout the school. I've been a PTA member at multiple other schools throughout the district. I was the Citizens for Good Schools Levy Support Committee President for the last couple of years. I was an AmeriCorps member for two years for the Berman School District. I've been preschool parent liaison for the Berman School District, helping connect parents with preschool programs throughout our school district. I was on the AmeriCorps project for the school district for two years, and that's a volunteer position within the, it's on the federal level.
All right. So back to you, Wendy. How well do you feel the state legislature has responded to the McCleary decision?
Not well. I think that, you know, their initial reaction was simply to put it off for several years. I still think that there are so many citizens that question original promises that were made and that we don't get answers. I really think that as citizens, we have to put the pressure on legislative levels to let them know that we really, really want this. I think that there's a lot of administrators in the school district that make sure that they tell them that, but I don't think as a general citizen, we've really exercised our right to go out and let the legislative know this is important to us and they need to make it happen.
I would also agree with that, the so-called down payment that's been made is really not a down payment. And their obligation to find a reliable revenue source to fund basic education has not been answered. Since there's money around to do that, that are fairly given me, if you ask me. So I think that we, as school board directors, also need to exercise our advocacy work in maintaining that pressure on Olympia. And I often speak to my legislators about education issues. I'm very politically involved. And so I feel very comfortable doing that and would actually hope that I would get to be assigned that role on school board directors, to be the legislative liaison to continue that work.
Okay. So, next question. What is your opinion of our state's school funding process? What should be changed, if anything? And that's back to you, Allison.
The current school funding process, they sort of, I think, answered that in the last question, that we need to come up with a more reliable source and way of funding education. There's been too much reliance on local dollars to sort of swap out what the state should have been doing for many years. So I would hope that through the McCleary decision, that the state would actually better fund education like you're supposed to be doing, basic education, so that we then have the flexibility, or if you run local levies, excuse me, to have more flexibility to spend our dollars in what the ways are that our community best needs and what our priorities are as a district, rather than using that money to simply stay afloat for needed operations.
Okay.
I agree. You know, really, as Allison said, the down payment we kind of got with the summer of the state funding really was insufficient. We need to have solid funding that matches what we should be getting. We should have a set number so that there isn't a budget process that's a question every year. We shouldn't be continually cutting things. I don't think that we should be implementing policies until we get the funding that we need to have to support those policies. We're not supporting our teachers because we are continuing to add more things to them, we're enlarging class sizes, but we're not giving them the opportunity outside of the classroom to fully understand the policies we're putting in place and the expectations we have of them in order to operate them correctly and right the first time.
Okay. So this one's back to you again, Wendy. Describe how the Advanced Placement Program could be more effective.
I think making sure that it's available to everyone. One of the things that's really hard about the Advanced Placement System is that some kids are given the opportunity and courage to go into it. Some are looked at as, well, you have to meet these certain steps. There is not a consistent process and policy on that. A lot of kids who... A lot of kids who start it when they're in elementary school are just kind of grandfather to end, once they get through the process, and there isn't a challenge put in place to make sure that they're continuing to meet the standards and the level of education that they should be getting in that program. There also needs to be something that's a little bit more challenging for those kids who place out of it. We have a student who has placed so high on that program, that in eighth grade, she's taking classes at the high school because she is too smart for eighth grade, and I think we need to do more to make that a challenging program.
You know, I think the AP program actually, the Advanced Placement Program is actually really a fantastic option for students. However, I think that we need to do a better job of recognizing that that's not the only way that students that excel can demonstrate that, and to give a jump up on their college credit, if you will, based on their scores, they can gain college credit in Advanced Placement. There are many other great options that Bremerton participates in, that we should be encouraging our students, whether it's dual enrollment at the college and running start programs, whether it's enrolling at the Westtown Tech to gain vocational credits. There's an option for everyone, based on what their future goals are, and I think we need to do a better job at educating students and giving them purpose and direction to take advantage of those different options, which might be Advanced Placement, it might be Running Start, it might be Westtown Tech, but the bottom line is we've got to make sure that they know about them and utilize the programs that are there.
All right. So, back to you, Allison. What is the proper role of the public school in providing sex education for students?
Well, the proper role, you know, I am very much an advocate, whether we're talking about sex education or any other sort of hot-button issue, is that parents really should be the primary educators when it comes to those sorts of things, or setting sort of the values and norms, what's acceptable in our family. Schools do have an obligation, however, to provide a minimum of basic group health classes, obviously, education about sort of what the options are, and basic knowledge, so that when parents aren't giving that information, they still have something to go on.
Okay.
I see it as a little bit different. I think we need to do more to involve with them in understanding the health risks involved. I think that, yes, parents should be involved, and parents should definitely talk, but I know that I come from a background where my parents never had that conversation. I had a very wonderful relationship, and still do with my parents, and yet that was never something we talked about. The only education I got was in school. Parents, of course, need the ability to opt out, but I think that there is a way that schools need to meet an obligation of the demand of what is going on in our society. They can make sure that our children are fully aware of how to protect themselves, teaching absence, of course, is the most important, but making sure that they understand not just the set education, both drug utilization with alcohol use, the dangers of their health and their future, and the real risks that that involves.
Okay. So, I already answered this a little bit, but it sounds like they want you to expand on a little bit more. Both of you are good community advocates for children. What specifically makes you different enough to get my vote?
Go back to me.
Yeah, back to you.
You know, really, I think that I have a passion to make sure that we are not just a nationally-recognized school district for our elementary programs, but we need to take that and expand it to our secondary. I really think that we need to make sure that our secondary education programs are being something that people want to come to Bremerton for. I really want to make sure that people see our choice programs, our diversity in education as a wonderful asset, and that they want to have their children come here, not just for preschool, not just for elementary, but for their whole, entire school career.
Okay.
I'm not sure I'm going to be able to sort of differentiate why this is better to get someone's vote, but you know, when I think about one of the primary reasons why I want to run for Bremerton School, beyond caring about my own child's experience within the school district, is I very much wholeheartedly believe that education is the fundamental sort of building block to the vitality of a community. So being someone who has really grown to love Bremerton, and want to see my city be successful, and want to see Bremerton be a place that people want to move businesses to and buy homes and raise children, you can't talk about any of that without recognizing the importance of education. So we all benefit from great schools, and I would say that beyond my role as parent and wanting to have my own kids be successful, I would ask for your vote in the sense that I very much recognize the bigger picture, and know that great schools benefit from great schools all of us.
Okay, so back to you, Allison. Do you think our schools sufficiently teach the value of credit ratings and finance?
You know, I actually was really pleased, coming from a financial aid perspective, that's what I did for many years in the higher education system, and I taught college freshmen often an orientation about how to manage their money. I always thought that it would be something that should be done earlier than entering college, that students should know how to manage their money, and know financial education, so I was really pleased to see that added, actually, as a district graduation requirement. So I am a champion for that, and definitely would like to see that continue. I think it's very important for students to know how to be financially responsible with their own money in high school, but then also the longer, bigger-term picture of how to do that, having the ability for college, taking out student loans, and ultimately managing their family budget.
Okay.
I think we're making steps in the right direction, I don't think we're there yet. I think that there, you know, having it as a requirement for high school is definitely important. I think that there are some other ways that we can certainly make sure that that's implemented, partnering not just with the students, but with the parents. We have many parents who also could benefit from some of those lessons, giving an opportunity maybe for some open house type things, where they're giving that opportunity of education to parents to understand financial classes that are available in their community, to help connect that through a whole-family basis, because it really starts at home, and there's a lot more involved with just teaching finance than what's going on in school, they need to have actual working knowledge of.
Okay, so this is a question that gets asked pretty much every week. Say something nice about your opponent.
You know, I've had a pleasure getting to know Allison, we've actually ran into each other this weekend, and my daughter had said, you know, "Remember that nice lady?", and I thought, you know, it's so great that two people who can have the same passion, because we do really get along and see eye to eye on many issues, but you know, that we can still be friendly, and knowing that my daughter perceives that was important to me, because I would never want somebody who was nice to me to my face, but not behind my back, and I don't feel that way about Allison, so I think she's a gentle person, she's very nice and friendly, and I like that when I see her in public, that we can stay alone and introduce our families to each other, and I think that's really important.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That sounds surprising.
No, that's, you should say one thing, and you would just look very, very kind, and I would echo a lot of what Wendy's saying, that we didn't have a touch with knowing each other before this, and we have been able to talk a little bit, and do very much agree on many things, and I would say that her passion for children is very clear, obviously through her list of community activities and supporting her own child at the school. Noble Avenue is very lucky to have her leadership there, and our community is lucky for all the work that she's done in the community as well.
So no big headlines out of that question, Karen?
Sorry.
So, back to you, Allison. How would you handle the requests if approached by an individual special interest group? An individual or a special interest group? Yeah, that's...
You know, I hope I'll answer the question, and of course you wanted me to, but I guess I would just reiterate that as a school board director, a member of five, your job is to be available to the community, so I would imagine that as a school board director, and I've had conversations with many current and former board members, that there are a lot of people that want your ear and your time, and that's part of our job as a school board director. However, one of the things that I think I'm really well-known for, and that anyone who's worked with me either in a job situation, or volunteer situation, or a committee work, would tell you that I'm very much a fair person, that I listen to people, I like to information gather, I'm an information seeker, and so I think people would always feel that I'm being fair to all interested parties, that I take information and make informed decisions based on all the information available to me.
I think I'd be careful with some of those special interest groups, because they're not always black and white, and I think anytime you have a special interest group, you have to be very wary of who you're talking to. If it's not someone who's a reliable source that you know personally, you really need to do your homework. There are definitely some special interest groups out there that have some great things to say. You know, taking, for example, the Monasori Program, that was a program that has started within our school district, and publicly was originally a special interest group. We've been able to turn that into a fantastic, growing, thriving program. There are some great things that they could certainly add as a special interest group, but there are certainly some things to be wary of. I would always want to expand my own knowledge and background, and hear what someone had to say, but as far as being able to champion for that, until I saw some working knowledge, I don't think that's something that I'd be able to get behind.
Okay, so back to you, Wendy. This is a two-part question. A, do you understand the role of the superintendent, and B, describe that role from your perspective.
Well, I hope so. I think that, you know, there are so many things that Dr. LeVell has to do, that I don't think that I would be able to sit and tell you what his job description is. I do think that the relationship that he has already with our city is overwhelming. I think that watching the school board meeting, the media, and the response of our community, when they just approached in general, and their excitement and passion behind him is fantastic. You know, being a school board member is certainly something that would be a challenge. You'd have to have a very structured relationship with the people that you work with, and Erin's not that type of a person. Erin is such an open person, he has an open-door policy, personally as well as professionally, and working with the superintendent is going to be a great thing for the whole community this time around.
My understanding of the superintendent's role, kind of simply put, is really sort of manage the day-to-day operations of this team, of what goes on within the school. So from a real basic level, school board directors help set policy and govern the district, and the superintendent's job is to sort of carry that out. So I would see the role that we would hold together is asking lots of questions of the superintendent, if I can understand something that was going on, or was questioning the way something was being implemented, about a policy that we've decided on or supporting, and make sure that the implementation is being carried out, as opposed to, my experience with Erin also has been one of intense community support behind him, and very much a doer guy, and very much involved on the ground level with students and administrators, and his style has gained him a lot of support, overwhelming support for the job that he has to do.
Okay, so that's all for the questions. Now you get your two-minute closing. We started off with Allison, so Wendy gets to start with the closing.
You know, I think that Bremerton School District really deserves another parent on the school board. We have one, I think it would be really nice to see another parent who understands the school district and all of the challenges that it has. Because we do offer so many diverse programs, we need to make sure that we have someone who is going to champion and stand behind the decisions we've already made to continue to have them. I think we also need to make sure that we're supporting our teachers. It's begun, and we really need to keep that momentum going, to enforce that we care about our teachers and we support them throughout the process of all of the new policies that they have that are put in place on a regular basis. As a school board member, I really want to make sure that we are continuing the great programs we have, making sure that we relay that to our community, and that's really the thing that I think is the most important right now, is getting that information out to our community, so they know what we have, and we can get in touch with our community and bridge the gap that is there right now.
Okay.
You know, I said a lot of this already, but just to reiterate, I'm a parent, obviously, and a community member, that cares deeply about my children, and our children, and our community, and I want to be able to bring some of that passion to the school board, to really have an impact at a different level than what I've been able to do. I've done a lot of grassroots, if you will, work in our community, particularly related to equality in education, and my perspective on sort of what students experience, or giving them purpose beyond the roles of the high school, I think is a perspective that leads to be a voice at the table for our students to be thinking about their futures beyond high school, whatever that may be, career or college, we need to make sure that that's being thought of and well-represented. At the same time, we also need to make sure that our community is actively engaged as well. So when we talk about education, education is not just simply a school district issue or a school problem, it's a community issue, and as a community, we really need to rally behind our schools and be involved, and so as a school board member, and given my community collaboration experience, I would bring that voice also and effort to the table, to make sure that we're reaching out to our community, engaging them in that process, and gaining their support. I've been meeting with a lot of community leaders and groups over the last few months, and gaining a lot of support from them, based on their knowledge of me, and I would just ask for you to consider joining that support and endorsement of my candidacy.
All right, thank you. Get a round of applause for our families.